Good evening, everyone. It is Thursday, December 4. This is the annual reorganization meeting of the Council Rock School District Board of School Directors. Welcome, everyone. Great to see so many people here. Thank you for coming. Dr. Senko, would you get us started, please?
Thank you, Mr. Tate. Please welcome 12th grade Council Rock High School South student, Simone Shavartz. And Simone, I'll pass it to you.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the round parts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Simone, that was absolutely beautiful. We have a little goody bag here for you. Thanks for giving us your time and talent tonight. I'm sure there's nothing as good in here as the cookies next door. Go get another cookie. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The purpose of this meeting is to administer the oath of office to the recently-elected school directors and to hold the annual election of officers of the board. Then, the newly-reorganized Board of Directors will elect its leadership for the coming year. The holdover school directors are Joseph Hidalgo, Ann Horner, Tracy Oseki, Linda Stone, and myself, Edward Tate. The recently-elected school directors to be sworn in this evening are Jim Green, Nicole Khan, Cheryl Rickert, and Michael Roosevelt. First on the agenda is the election of a temporary president. We'll have public comment. I haven't gotten a sign-up sheet with anyone signed up. If anyone wishes to make public comment, you're welcome. Just announce your name and the municipality of your residence. I don't see anybody. We'll check the sign-up sheet and then we'll move on. All right, very good. So now we'll move on with the election of a temporary president. Nominations are now in order for the office of temporary president. Ms. Stone?
I would nominate Tracy Oseki.
Thank you. Second is not necessary. Are there other nominations for the office of temporary president? All right, hearing none. Ms. Oseki, would you please take over the meeting?
Sure, I'm happy to. Okay, will the board secretary please read the certificates of election of all new or re-elected board members? I'm hearing that Judge Petrucci has it. Okay. Do we need it? We need it, Judge. Sorry.
We've gotten off to a smooth start tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Judge Petrucci. And you can stay because we're going to have you do your up next. Okay. Ms. Brink?
We, the undersigned members of the County Board of Elections, hereby certify that after tabulating the votes cast at the municipal election held on the fourth day of November 2025, Nicole Pete Khan was duly elected to the office of school director of Council Rock School District Region 9 for a four-year term. Cheryl Rickert was duly elected to the office of school director of Council Rock School District Region 8 for a four-year term. Michael Roosevelt was duly elected to the office of school director of Council Rock School District Region 6 for a four-year term. And Jim Green was duly elected to the office of school director of Council Rock School District Region 3 for a four-year term.
Thank you, Ms. Brink. Judge Petrucci, will you please administer the oath of office for the newly-elected members?
Absolutely. Thank you for having me. Any particular order the board wants, or I'm usually a ladies-first guy. So, all right, Ms. Rickert, do you want to go first only because yours is in my hand? Yeah, come on up, bring your family.
We hand you a microphone too, so the YouTube, the one Tony has.
Will this stretch? Don't trip over this. Are you sure? Okay. Left hand Bible, right hand up. Are you guys ready? Okay. All right, you're going to repeat after me. Okay, "I, Cheryl Rickert..."
"I, Cheryl Rickert."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I will support, obey, and defend..."
"That I will support, obey, and defend."
"...the Constitution of the United States."
"The Constitution of the United States."
"And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania."
"And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania."
"And as a school board director..."
"And as a school board director."
"...of the Council Rock School District..."
"Of the Council Rock School District."
"...I will discharge the duties..."
"I will discharge the duties."
"...of my office with fidelity."
"Of my office with fidelity."
Congratulations. Welcome to Council Rock.
Ms. Khan, are you ready? Thank you, sir. Are you ready?
I'm ready, thank you.
Okay. "I, Nicole Pete Khan..."
"I, Nicole Pete Khan."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I will support, obey, and defend..."
"That I will support, obey, and defend."
"...the Constitution of the United States."
"The Constitution of the United States."
"And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania."
"And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania."
"And as a school board director..."
"And as a school board director."
"...of the Council Rock School District..."
"Of the Council Rock School District."
"...I will discharge the duties..."
"I will discharge the duties."
"...of my office with fidelity."
"Of my office with fidelity."
And congratulations. Welcome to Council Rock. Thank you. Congratulations again. And, Mr. Green? Are you ready? All right, Mr. Green, are you ready?
Ready.
Okay. "I, Jim Green..."
"I, Jim Green."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I will support, obey, and defend..."
"That I will support, obey, and defend."
"...the Constitution of the United States."
"The Constitution of the United States."
"And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania."
"And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania."
"And as a school board director..."
"And as a school board director."
"...of the Council Rock School District..."
"Of the Council Rock School District."
"...I will discharge the duties..."
"I will discharge the duties."
"...of my office with fidelity."
"Of my office with fidelity."
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Welcome to Council Rock. Thank you, sir. Welcome. Absolutely. And, Mr. Roosevelt? Come on down. Mr. Tate? Good job. Thank you. Okay. "I, Michael Roosevelt..."
"I, Michael Roosevelt."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I will support, obey, and defend..."
"That I will support, obey, and defend."
"...the Constitution of the United States."
"The Constitution of the United States."
"And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania."
"And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania."
"And as a school board director..."
"And as a school board director."
"...of the Council Rock School District..."
"Of the Council Rock School District."
"...I will discharge the duties..."
"I will discharge the duties."
"...of my office with fidelity."
"Of my office with fidelity."
Congratulations.
All originals. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Wish you all the best. Congratulations to the new board.
All right. Thanks for being here, Judge. Okay. All right, I think we need a roll call of our newly-elected school board.
Mr. Tate?
Present.
Mr. Hidalgo?
Here.
Mr. Roosevelt?
Here.
Ms. Oseki?
Here.
Ms. Khan?
Here.
Ms. Stone?
Here.
Ms. Horner?
Here.
Ms. Rickert?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Present.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the election of board president. Nominations are now in order for the office of board president.
Ma'am, I would like to nominate Nicole Khan, please.
Okay, are there any other nominations?
I would like to second that nomination.
I don't think we need a second, but that's fine. Okay?
I'd like to nominate Mike Roosevelt.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, seeing that there are no further nominations, we will close the nominations and proceed to vote on the board president. So... It sounds like we're going to do a roll call. Ms. Brink?
Mr. Tate?
Nicole Khan.
Mr. Hidalgo? Mr. Roosevelt?
Michael Roosevelt.
Ms. Oseki?
Nicole Khan.
Ms. Khan?
Nicole Khan.
Ms. Stone?
Nicole Khan.
Ms. Horner?
Mike Roosevelt.
Ms. Rickert?
Nicole Khan.
And Mr. Green?
Nicole Khan.
Okay, Ms. Brink, please announce the tally of the votes for board president.
So we have six for Ms. Khan and three for Mr. Roosevelt.
Okay. So, now I hand it over to you, Ms. Khan.
Thank you, Ms. Oseki. Next on the agenda is the election of vice president. Nominations are now in order for the office of vice president. Are there any nominations? Ms. Horner?
Joe Hidalgo.
Are there any other nominations? Ms. Oseki?
Ed Tate.
Any other nominations?
I have a point of order. Or, do I? Hold on one second.
Seeing there are no further...
I'm going to refuse the nomination. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing there are no further nominations, we will close nominations and proceed to vote on vice president. Since there is only one nomination, Mr. Ed Tate, do we still do a roll call vote?
Sure. Because there's one. You can either vote yea or nay for Mr. Tate.
So, Ms. Brink, could we please do a roll call vote?
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Mr. Hidalgo?
Yes.
Mr. Roosevelt?
No.
Ms. Oseki?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Horner?
No.
Ms. Rickert?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
That's seven yes and two no.
Thank you. Receiving majority of the votes, Mr. Ed Tate is the vice president. Thank you. All right. We, okay, so, give me a second here, sorry. We already did the roll call of the reorganization of the board, correct, school directors? Okay. All right. Thank you. We will move on. Apologies, bear with me. All right, we are going to move on to, I believe we are on item D, the approval of school board committee charters. That is for the education, facilities, finance, and policy committees. I would ask Dr. Senko if you could just briefly, just in a couple sentences, explain what the charters are for the purpose of the vote. Thank you.
And I'll give you a high-level overview and I'll ask Peter to help with that, but each year we have, when we have a new election, we have to commit to the charters for each of those committees that you just referenced, saying that we will follow by the guidelines set forth in the charters.
That's correct, and these documents are here before you, just outlining the charters of each of those committees.
Great, thank you both. Can I get a motion for the approval of the school board committee charters, please?
I move to approve the school board committee charters, education, facilities, finance, and policy committees.
Thank you, Ms. Oseki. Can I get a second?
Second?
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Ms. Brink, please mark the vote as unanimous. All right, we're moving on to item E, the president's appointment of committee chairpersons. So at this point, in accordance with Board Policy 005, I hereby appoint the following members as chair or co-chairs of the following committees. For Nicole Khan and Tracy Oseki to serve as co-chairs of the education committee, Ed Tate and Linda Stone to serve as chair of the facilities committee, Linda Stone as chair of the finance committee, Tracy Oseki and Jim Green to serve as chair of the policy committee. Thank you both for serving and thank you for any of the board members that previously served on committees this past school year. All right, we'll move on to item F, which is the appointment of Bucks County Intermediate Unit Number 22 representative. I will serve as a Bucks County Intermediate Number 22 representative this school year. Moving on to G, item G, appointment of two MBIT representatives to represent us for Council Rock. I hereby appoint the following two members as MBI representatives, Ann Horner and Cheryl Rickert. Thank you both. Item H, the appointment of craft liaison. I hereby appoint the following board member, Mr. Ed Tate, to serve, or to continue to serve as our craft liaison. Thank you. Item I, appointment of Pennsylvania School Board Association Legislative Chairperson, the PSBA representative. I would ask that Mr. Ed Tate represent us there. Thank you. And item J, appointment of PSBA employee relations contact, just kind of a point of contact emergencies, and that will be myself. Thank you. All right, we flew through that. At this point, we're moving on, thank you so much, to public comment, the second half. I don't know if there was anyone signed up for public comment in the second half? All right, there is nobody. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak? Excellent. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to item eight, board comment. We have new business. Is there any new business for board members? I will just take a minute to make a short comment, if I may. I would like to thank my board colleagues, Jim Green, Tracy Oseki, Cheryl Rickert, Linda Stone, for their support and confidence in me to fulfill this role. I would also like to thank our previous board presidents, Mr. Tate and Mrs. Polly, for their unwavering support, leadership, and mentorship. We have many things to be proud of as a district and have implemented new initiatives that will change the future of this district for the better, such as full-day kindergarten, the successful implementation and redesignation of the HeartSafe Schools for our school district, and the work that has begun in structured literacy. I will continue to work and serve this district to ensure that every student can learn and every staff member can teach in a safe and welcoming environment. My priorities are to continue the path forward to support educational excellence and student well-being that is best for Council Rock. Every decision that I will make as one vote will always be in the best interest of students in our district and our community. I look forward to the work ahead and collaborating not only with my fellow board colleagues, also our administration. Thank you and have a great evening. I will move on to old business, item 8B. Mr. Tate?
May I, please? I can't resist. Just because it's the season of giving and I want to just make a couple of comments on behalf of the Council Rock Education Foundation. I want to thank the community for the incredible support that we received. Giving Tuesday was a great success for the Council Rock Education Foundation. There was a great deal of generosity that is going to help fuel the educator initiative projects that really sparked creativity, curiosity, and meaningful learning across Council Rock School District. As we continue the season of giving, we encourage families to consider making a gift of gratitude, and it's something our family tries to do regularly. In honor of a CRSD staff member, a teacher, an administrator, a school staff person who really has made a difference, you can make a small gift in their name to Council Rock Education Foundation, and they will be notified of your recognition. And, of course, gifts are tax-deductible. Grant inaction visits are underway. There's a World War II Voices of Democracy exhibition at CR North, an upcoming visit to Holland Middle School. If you're interested in any of these grants and action visits, you can contact me or Beth Ann Dobash or any craft board member. Let's see, what else? And to save the dates, the Monte Carlo Gala is on Friday, February 27. I happen to know that at least one board member has already purchased...